We will stand for the pledge of the flag. I'm waiting for it to come back on my screen so I can see. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Welcome everyone to our February 4th board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from January 21st, 2021?
Booed.
Second.
Did you, who, did you get that, Jody?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Okay, we have a special treat tonight. We have two representatives from WEP here to talk about the sewer re-management system coming up our way. And so we have Frank Mento and Shannon Hardy. I'll turn it over to you. I'm going to go down and click on the share screen. You tell me what you need me to do from there.
It says host is disabled participant screen sharing.
That's rude.
Maybe I didn't need to hit that. Okay, now what's it say?
Uh, let's see if I can get it. It still says you've disabled me. I wonder if...
Because there's the green share screen thing at the bottom.
That's for you to share your screen.
That's for you.
Right. Oh, okay.
Need to make her a co-host or something.
Right. I don't know. How do I release it?
Well, you can do that now, if that's what you want to say.
I don't know. We've never had anything like this in a meeting where we've had to share this kind of...
Um, are you on your email? Can you access email from that computer? Is there an email address and I can send it to you?
I mean, I have my phone, but I don't have...
Oh, on the computer that you're on?
Okay, you can send it to coachdc50@aul.com.
Coach DC50@aul.com. All right, coming over shortly.
Now everybody in the village knows who my... It's on, it's on anyways. I mean, it's easy to find it, I suppose.
Everybody who watches our meetings, maybe not everybody in the whole village.
People will be selling it. It's valuable.
Where does he have the actions to co-host?
It's probably somewhere in the center.
On top, if you went into preferences or something.
I just emailed it, so maybe you got it.
Here's the thing, we just hit something that said allow participants to share screen.
Try that.
Oh, I'm in. You did.
You can thank my wife because I have no idea what I'm doing.
Good job, Linda. All right.
You're a rock star.
Have fun.
Thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
All right, Frank.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Appreciate all the trustees being here with us tonight. You know, we just did this for the town of Lysander and just like there, we wish we could be in person because it's much more effective, but we'll do the best we can given the circumstances of COVID and everything else going on. So what we want to present to you tonight is Anadota County's plan for sewer consolidation and the platform that goes along with that. It's our hope that this presentation will give you some information and help you make a decision about whether you want to join the consolidation effort. So I need to tell you that this is a effort that was really led and started by Ryan McMahon and just reminded myself that I'm not sure I introduced Shannon Hardy as my deputy commissioner. He worked very hard on this, so I need to do that.
Yeah.
This was an effort that was started by Ryan McMahon, our county exec, and it's really partially an economic development effort as well as an infrastructure renewal effort and something to unify an essential utility across the community. So our agenda is for the next probably 15 minutes, we'll give you an overview of what this means to you. First, as a high-level strategy and why it may make sense to take your local assets, combine them with our Anadota County sewer assets and put it together in one united pool. And then the second thing is we'll get a touch more granular, although the village is a little different than the other towns, but we'll do our best to describe the process of consolidation and what it could mean to your constituent base. So that's the plan. Let's go to the first slide if we can there, Shannon. So this is a slide of what we call the CSD, the Consolidated Sanitary District in Anadota County. And you can see there's six different colors there and six different notes about treatment plants. Each one of those colors is a service area that's represented by a treatment plant and by flows that make up that service area and that aggregate at that treatment facility. So the boundaries of those colors are not financial boundaries. They're not legal boundaries. They're just technical boundaries for flow. You'll see that BSK service area is over on the left, shown by the BSK wastewater treatment plant. And then the rest of the colors are indicative of the other service areas. So six in total, 19 municipalities involved here, including the city. And really a complex network of local assets, your laterals, your sewer mains, maybe your pump stations, combined with all the other towns and villages, and then our sewer mains, sewer interceptors, major pump stations, and major wastewater treatment plants, all of which are owned by us. I just want to note here with this slide that you are the second service area that we are considering under consolidation. The first was Meadowbrook Limestone down in the right-hand corner, the kind of the pinkish-red area. They have, four of the six municipalities have signed on in that area, have signed our lease to allow us to take over and operate and maintain their assets. The town of Duett and the city of Syracuse were still in negotiations with. That was phase one. Phase two, which is you guys, Baldenville Wastewater Treatments Plant Service Area, it's the town of Lysander, the town of Van Buren, and the village of Baldenville, and the town of Gettysburg will come later. Next slide, please, Shannon. So this is a slide that shows the current sewer structure as it's set up in Anadota County. On the left-hand side is the local municipality, that's you guys. On the right-hand side is our county sewer department. So you own right now your local sewers, your small pump stations, your manholes, and any laterals. You have a general fund, I presume, being a village, where you have revenues and expenses and a budget that corresponds to your sewer work and your sewer efforts. You may have limited capital investment depending upon your financial resources and your economic viability at this point. You know, one of the things we always talk about is sanitary sewers, as you know, are absolutely essential and necessary, but oftentimes because they're out of sight and out of mind, they don't get the investment and the upkeep that they may need. Now, across the sanitary district, there's a wide range of fees that are absorbed at the local level, anywhere from zero to $400 per year, depending upon your level of investment in your local assets. On the right side, as I said, county sewer department. These are the big wastewater treatment plants, the bigger pump stations, and the bigger connecting sewers that take flows from the village, convey it to our trunk sewers, and eventually convey it to the treatment plants. WEP has a sewer fund. In fact, we are a separate fund from the county. We're still part of the county, but we're not part of the general fund. We have our own budget, about $100 million budget for operation, for maintenance, for capital investment, and for revenue generation and for expenses. So it's a pretty significant budget. We have a lot of assets, as you can imagine, big assets, expensive assets. So we have a long-term capital plan where we look every year at infrastructure upgrades and replacements. All that is then filtered down into what we'll call an annual sewer unit charge. This past year is 44881. That's a charge that every constituent in the Consolidated Sanitary District will see on their tax bill if they are connected to our system. So you can see there's two separate fee structures here. There's one at the local level and one at the county level. And in part, that's a challenge. That's one of the things that will go away with consolidation. It's our intent as we move forward and further develop the consolidation model and financial piece that one sewer unit charge will take over all the other local municipal charges. Next slide, Shannon. So now let's start to talk about why this may make sense. And let me say right up front, by no means do you have to do this. This is an option that you choose as, as a village entity, as a village board. And you decide whether you want to join the consolidation effort or not. It's not mandatory, but there are distinct advantages as we see it and we hope to convey. So if you take a look at the graphic, there's a home on the side. The home has a private lateral, as most of them do. It comes out to a public sewer system. That's a local system owned by you. That's the left side of that image, okay? Those are your pipes, your pump stations. They then feed in, as I mentioned, to our pipes. That's the diagram on the right. Our pipes and our pump stations lead to county-owned wastewater treatment plants. We hold permits and we're required to comply with state regulations and federal regulations on what we discharge from our treatment plants. So it's, in a way, it's segmented ownership, if you can think about it that way. On one hand, the county is responsible for what's being discharged into the water bodies, and it has to meet a whole set of parameters of which we work very, very hard to comply with every day and every week and every year. But we don't always control what comes into our system. And one of the big culprits that creates a lot of problems for us is what's called infiltration and inflow. Basically groundwater and stormwater that during wet weather events, heavy rains, snow melt, intense shower that may be of a very short duration, or an intense rain shower that may be of a very long duration. Sometimes that clean water gets into our system. And as you can imagine, it's not supposed to be there, but when it gets in there, we are then forced to convey it and treat it. And what that does is it elevates the cost of our use of assets. It elevates our energy costs, and it has an impact on our operations and our maintenance because you think about if if a certain percentage of what is supposed to be in the pipe is taken up by groundwater or stormwater, that's not a good thing. We shouldn't be treating that. So segmented ownership in part contributes to that. One of the goals of consolidation is if we do take ownership from what I'll call toilet to treatment, the complete system, we immediately go to work on a plan to control and minimize the amount of INI that enters our system. And you're not alone in this by any stretch of the imagination. Don't, don't think that at all. Every town, every village has INI in their system. It's the nature of these pipes. A lot of the systems, a lot of the local systems are a little bit older. Certainly the villages are even older than some of the towns. So more susceptible to infiltration and inflow, which has cancerous effects on the rest of the assets in our system. One of the reasons we think that we want to consolidate is to, to minimize and to begin to attack those INI problems that plague the entire community. Excellent slide, please, Shannon. So this little diagram, set of three diagrams, is intended to show that INI has not only a financial implication, the top left, it also has a capacity implication on the top right because it is taking up space in our pipes that should be dedicated to strictly sanitary sewer. And then it has a regulatory impact, most importantly, on the bottom because we are subject to fines and other penalties if we have too much INI and it impacts our ability to control what we're discharging. And by the way, what we discharge to are water bodies, right? And water bodies are community-wide assets. So Anadota Lake, Seneca River, many of the other water bodies that our treatment plants discharge to are used by the entire community on a number of different levels. So this is a community-wide initiative as much as it is local consideration for INI and other things as well. Next slide, Shannon, please. So we think that action is needed now. We're at a point in the development of our consolidated district where we're recognizing that communities are getting much older, that infrastructure needs to be upgraded, or we all will pay a severe price in excessive fees and higher rates, much higher rates, as we'll show later in this presentation, than if we didn't consolidate. So you have two choices. And again, the choice is entirely up to you. We can continue to do business as is. That is that you maintain your local systems. We maintain our local systems, or our county systems, I should say. And we have segmented ownership and you deal with things as, as they come up. The risk there, of course, is that if you have a severe or catastrophic issue with your system, the ability to finance that and then have a representative constituent base to pay that is at risk. So option one is shown here is the do-nothing alternative, continue as is. There's a good chance your INI will continue to get worse. Very rarely does it get better in, in communities, especially older communities. You'll see that regulatory pressures may be passed down and penalties may go up as a result of bad pipes, bad pump stations, high degrees of INI, and other things that would cause the county or others issues. We know for a fact that local municipalities like the village of Baldenville have extremely limited resources at times to maintain and fix their assets. And again, no fault of your own, everybody's in the same boat. But again, what tends to be underground and out of sight is out of mind when there's perhaps a perception of more pressing issues. But really what happens if, if you do nothing is this INI increases. And you can see going back to the diagram, that's the same diagram, except that that treatment plant is now supersized. It's a bigger, bigger treatment plant. And we can tell you, treatment plants are very, very, very expensive assets to manage, to rehabilitate, and to continuously operate. That's not something we want to do, but that's what we'll be stuck with doing as a community if we don't get control on the INI in the system. So if we are not allowed to touch your system because it's your, it's owned by you, then you have excessive amounts of INI. And then your sister communities, who may have the same thing, lo and behold, before you know it, the Baldenville-Seneca Falls wastewater treatment plant might need a major, major upgrade. And who's going to pay for that? Everybody's going to pay for that. And it's a big price tag. So that's part of the impetus for consolidation. The other thing that's worthy of note is that the sewer customers, who are used to two sewer fees, will now have one, one county unit rate where everything rolls up to it. So that's option one, do nothing, continue as is. The next slide is option two. You can see that wastewater treatment plant is back to just a small little plant. You can see that the, what was labeled the public is now the black line. That's all now under our ownership and under our control for operation and maintenance. And I want to stress that point. Under our control for operation and maintenance. That's it. So we will be responsible to operate and maintain and provide the capital investment for the upgrade of assets to get away from INI and to get good asset upkeep consistent with federal and state standards. The community stands to benefit with efficiencies and economies of scale. WEP, this is what we do. So we have resources. We have trucks, equipment, TVs, cameras, maintenance and parts. This is our business. This is the business that we're in, which in part may make it enticing for others that maybe don't have those resources. So WEP has those resources. And one of the first things that we'll do when you come on is we will prioritize and start to attack the bad points in your system. Key point on financing here, financing will fall under one jurisdiction, that's the county, which will eliminate competition for grants and grant funding. We are always trying to secure the best financial elements that we can for our project. So that would automatically fall to us as part of the work that we do every year. As I mentioned before, it consolidates everything into a single sewer fund and budget and a single sewer unit charge. So toilet to treatment now, your pumps and pipes and pump stations come under our ownership for operation and maintenance. I want to draw a very clear distinction here, and maybe we'll talk about this a little bit later as well, but we are not in the game, nor do we want to be in the game, about planning or zoning or dealing with economic development in your village. That's not what we do. That's not what we want to do. This is not a power play at all. In fact, it's the opposite. We just want to provide the best level of sanitary sewer service for your constituent base and for our assets because at the end of the day, as I said, we're responsible for compliance. Next slide, please. So we think consolidation is not only the best solution, but the most relevant solution given the state of our community right now. And just to reiterate, we have the knowledge, tools, and expertise to move quickly and comprehensively to address that INI component that I talked about. We can streamline administrative efforts and have an economy of scale and our approach to the business aspect of this, which you'll hear about in a minute. The county, the county will be relieved of immense regulatory pressures and penalties. That's dollars saved that translates to everybody in the district. Because if we can control INI and start little by little in eliminating it from our system, we're not so vulnerable to penalties and non-compliance events at treatment plants, which cost a lot of money. I think the biggest point for consolidation is it ensures a uniform level of service and customer cost, no matter where you live in the county. Next slide, please, Shannon. So I know this is a cliche and something that is often said, we're all in this together, but it's truly the case here because, you know, the village of Baldenville, you may have issues with your system right now, and so others within the district are helping to pay for your problem. On the converse, other municipalities, the town of Clay, the village of Fayetteville, anybody else within the district that also has problems, some point in the future, you may be helping to pay them. But the end result is that the price tag is cheaper for everyone as we move forward in this consolidation effort, and we'll show you that graphically. There's no doubt that because of the age of the system across the district, that rates will have to go up. There's no doubt about that. The question is, do they go up faster in a consolidation scenario, or do they go up faster in a segmented structure where you own your assets and we own our assets? So keep that in the back of your mind as we go through the rest of this presentation. So now I'm going to turn it over to Shannon, and I'll tell you, Shannon and I have been working together probably a year and a half, almost two years on this. So we're going to start almost from square one and take you through the little process here. So, Shannon.
Thanks. So, you know, as Frank mentioned, we've been working on consolidation probably since the middle of June 2019. And really trying to look at, you know, this has been driven in large part, starting out in the Meadowbrook Limestone wastewater treatment plant area. That service area has a tremendous amount of INI. We were getting a tremendous amount of pressure from DEC and EPA to do something about the excess flows coming into the plant. And we kept coming up with the challenge of what's the solution? Do we try and permit and pass that regulatory issue back onto the tributary systems that becomes an administrative effort is, you know, we went around and around with how do we solve this problem? We looked at, do we supersize the plant? And you'll see the numbers on that. And, and we'll go through that business case analysis, and, and we kept coming back to it needs to be a uniform ownership. And so that's where consolidation started. And we, we looked at, how do we own these assets? Well, transfer of the actual ownership would be very complicated. That would involve dissolving local town districts, village, you know, boundary issues. And so we came up with this long-term lease agreement. It's been reviewed. It's been approved by the county legislature. We did the environmental review in March and we, 2020, and they authorized, the legislature authorized us to sign those lease agreements with the five municipalities in the Meadowbrook service area. Last summer, very excited to say, we did execute four agreements with the towns of Manlyse and Pompey, the villages of Fayetteville and Manlyse, I apologize for the error on the slide. And as soon as we got those contracts in place, we immediately went to work, spending, we've got a $9 million project, and we're going through, and we are lining sewer mains, we are cleaning and televising and lining sewer laterals and rehabbing manholes. We've got meters deployed. We're looking at and monitoring how much excess flow was there before we started, and we're going to quantify the progress we've done. We're really proud of this product, and we really feel that it's, it's giving us a uniform service in those communities. So with that, under our belt, we turn to the Baldenville-Seneca Falls wastewater treatment plant, which is you folks. We feel there's an opportunity here with the Baldenville plant. Maybe the INI isn't a problem. We don't want to wait for it to become a problem. So we want to move on this, and we want to work with you folks and get working in your collection system. So most municipalities in the Consolidated Sanitary District use us on an annual basis for sewer maintenance services. The village doesn't. You guys have your own sewer fund and your own crews that maintain your sewer system. So I wanted to give you a little bit of introduction of who we are and what we do. We have several divisions within the Department of WEP. Our operations division runs the plants. Our maintenance division does all of the pumps and the equipment at those plants. We have an eye and instrumentation and electrical group. But we have the flow control group. That's our sewer crews. These are the people that work out in the collection system. And it's a pretty impressive team of employees. We've got about 82 employees currently. We've got 46 personnel who work just on gravity sewer systems. They're going out, they're jetting, they're televising, they're root cutting, they're locating and inspecting manholes. They do all sorts of work, checking on and responding to lack of sewer flow. We've got another 18 personnel related focused solely on pump stations. We've got about 160 pump stations throughout the Consolidated Sanitary throughout the consolidated sanitary district. Probably 60 of them are what we call the large class, they're two to three MGD or greater. So they're pretty substantial facilities. We also have 18 personnel that provide supervisory, administrative support, answer phones, technical services. We've got a GIS team that goes out, they map, they collect. Everything we do is on a digital map. Our teams use tough books and all sorts of up-to-date current technology to make sure that our crews are armed with the best information when they go out in the field so they can find things and respond quickly. We also have the benefit of 24/7 monitoring and on-call support. Our operations team at Metro, they're there all the time. They're always answering the phone. If any of the customers that we serve has an issue, someone is there to take the call. No matter what, Christmas Eve, Easter morning, someone's there and a WEP crew will be out and deal with whatever a resident is dealing and help whatever a resident's dealing with. As Frank mentioned, we've got a lot of equipment. We have all of the equipment in-house that we need to get the job done. We have, I think we're up to nine jet fact trucks. You may have seen the big jolly green giant driving around the county. It's a lime green truck that we use to clean and jet and suck out all sorts of grit and grease and debris that plugs up sewers. We've got four CCTV vans with little robotic cameras. We're always, we're out constantly inspecting sewer lines and taking a look at what kind of shape they're in. We've got all sorts of heavy-duty crane trucks, pulling pumps, you name it, we do it in-house. And house call pickup trucks outfitted with all the equipment, on-call 24/7 emergency support. As I mentioned, we've got a tremendous data management support team in the office. Everything we have is fully GIS mapped. It's in an asset management program where we log any work, any issues, anything we find. Every sewer pipe has a unique number and we have a log and we can pull up that asset's history. We know when the last time we were there, we know material age, you name it. We've got it. So because we haven't serviced, oops, hang on. Sorry about that. So we haven't serviced the village of Baldwinsville. You are now. You are not one of our customers that we've done, that we have under an annual contract. That being said, we had a very fantastic crew of GIS guys who went out and did some preliminary investigations. Maybe you saw them wandering around recently, but I asked them to go and at least start building the map. Tell me how much the village of Baldwinsville, give me some preliminary ideas of what this municipality owns, where is it? And here's the numbers. Here's your system. This is you, village of Baldwinsville. The black lines are your sewers, the white lines are your manholes. Blue is our pump stations, greens are yours. Yellow are our trunk sewers that Frank mentioned. And here's the Baldwinsville Seneca Knowles wastewater treatment plant. It's tucked down in off of Barber Lane. You wouldn't even know it's there actually if you drove down 370. But that's where your wastewater goes and this is your system. You have about 28 miles of sewer. Keep that in perspective, there's 25.3 miles of roads in the village of Baldwinsville per the DOT inventory. So that's a lot of pipe underground. It's about 574 manholes, about 2,900 laterals, those service pipes going out to the mains. You own four pump stations. There's four green dots. And there's another just under a mile of force main piping associated with those force mains or those pump stations. So that's a lot of assets and it needs to be maintained. And as I mentioned before, EPA, we got a lot of pressure from DEC and EPA related to our treatment plans and the systems that are in the collection systems that are tributary. And one of the things that EPA sets is what's called the CMOM standard, capacity management and operation and maintenance. Because of all the issues with aging infrastructure, EPA sets standards to make sure that those out-of-sight assets that Frank talked about are being looked at. And they want those assets underground looked at once every seven years at a minimum. So that's 15% of the sewer mains looked at. So 15%, I think it was 28 miles. You can do the numbers that I didn't, I don't have it in my head, but in the village, making sure getting out, cleaning them, jetting them, if there's roots that have gotten in there, cutting them, making sure that they are open and flowing freely so that the water can get to where it needs to go. And it's not backing up and it's not flooding basements. Some of the other things is, so when you're finding, you know, when we do this, we look at it. If we see and inspect a pipe, it's got cracks, we want to get that lined. If it's collapsed, we want to get that excavated and replaced. Same thing with manholes. We should be inspecting once every seven years. We want to be replacing, we're going to be replacing them and adjusting the manhole frames and covers. If they're broken, if they're collapsed, if there's structural issues, dig it up and replace it. Some of the other system maintenance stuff, obviously laterals, those service tubs. Anybody, you know, you folks know if somebody in the village has an issue, they call the DPW, they want support. We're there for that. We can go out, we've got the abilities to re-establish service, televise, determine whether it can be lined, maybe it needs to be dug and replaced. One of the things that's on here that it's not on here, but it's a big part of owning a utility is DigSafe, 811 UFPO markouts. If we lease your system, we take over that responsibility. We put you on our GIS map and we mark, we take care of those calls and we mark it out for you. Those four pump stations at a minimum, it's a monthly inspection. Our crews go out, check the pumps, make sure they're functioning, make sure, check the controls, make sure everything is reporting back as need be. And again, 24/7, somebody is at the metro board monitoring and waiting. And if that alarm goes off, deploying resources to deal with it. We're taking care of your maintenance, the repairs to this pump station, to the pumps and taking on capital improvements if things need to be rebuilt. So when we look at that and we take those standard levels and we apply average maintenance cost to the number of assets that we've estimated for your system and we look at this, we look at an annual and O and M of about $367,000 per year and a corresponding capital investment. And again, these are just best estimates. We don't know, we haven't been in your system, we haven't inspected it. But if we apply an annualized replacement of miles of sewer and manholes and pump stations, we're coming up with about $443,000 a year in capital asset renewal. That's $810,000 a year for an annual budget. You know, I think that's probably more than what the general fund is paying right now. So that's where we looked at this and we said, there's got to be a business case for this. This has to make sense. And so we looked at for the village of Baldwinsville, oops. Just roughly estimating standing alone to do that work, the average village resident probably pays about $100 a year towards the village or the sewer fund. Add to that the $450, $450 that we charge, the average resident in the village of Baldwinsville combined pays about $600 a year for sewer service in Anadaga County. So what you're seeing in the next years out from that is what would it look like under consolidation? Or the do-nothing option? So the do-nothing option, you can see the red line as Frank pointed out. You continue your asset's age, your O and M increases to meet EPA standards. You have more capital investment and that local village charge climbs until it gets close to $300 a year. And again, this assumes you're maintaining all of your equipment, all your administrative expenses. Everything stays with you. At the same time, the blue, which is our cost, begins to climb as we supersize our plants. We increase our operating expenses and we go from 450 closer to $500, $600. And a customer in the village starts to approach $800, $900 a year for sewer service. We go back to the consolidated option. Your local charge goes away. We absorb your operation and maintenance. We then take instead of investing in a large supersized plant and all of the extra O and M related to that, we apply that money towards investing in your assets and fixing them and keeping the I and I out and restoring capacity. And what ends up happening is that cost goes down considerably and rises much slower as Frank had mentioned. It makes business sense from our perspective. We avoid a significant capital cost to supersize our plant. We avoid a tremendous O and M bill for a plant that is far too big. So what is this lurk on the long term? And what does this mean? So when we look at consolidation, we look at all 19 municipalities. And we wanted to see what does this, what does it mean? If everybody in the community met EPA standards, so the top line is everybody's cost, all 19 municipalities, and if they all met EPA standards for their O and M and had robust capital programs and WEP had to do their own individual part, we continue down the do-nothing road. By year seven, the cumulative cost, capital and O and M in the consolidated sanitary district approaches $200 million a year. Our approach where we take on the local assets, including the city of Syracuse, we avoid major capital investment to our wastewater treatment plants and we avoid their O and M, we're at $150 million a year by year seven. What does that mean for the village of Baldwinsville resident? $900 per year versus $700 per year? Those aren't exact numbers. And again, it's just a model and it's assuming a pretty high level of capital investment across everything, but in order to compare apples to apples, that's what we assumed. And we know based on this, this makes business sense for us to take on those local systems and have a unified collection system throughout the CSD for all municipalities. So where are we at? Phase two, the county legislature earlier this week passed a resolution, they authorized those lease agreements with the village of Baldwinsville, Lysander and Van Buren. We're continuing, we're doing our meetings with all of you folks. We hope that you will consider this and consider a resolution adopting it, authorizing the mayor to sign it. Should you do that, we would immediately begin to work with your personnel. We'd work on assembling the background information and we'd go to work and making sure you're fully on our system so that we can get an executed agreement and take over. You know, we we think this is what's best for the community and we hope you think the same. With that, are there any questions?
So Mayor, at this point, we would like to take whatever questions that you or the trustees might have. We know we threw a lot at everybody here tonight. I think it's important to recognize that the county and the county legislature is behind this at this point. As Shannon mentioned just earlier this week, they passed the resolution authorizing the adoption and approval of the leases for this service area, phase two service area of Baldwinsville Seneca Knowles. So now the ball's really in your court. Certainly if you decide you want to do this, then you would move forward with a resolution approving such. And if you decide that that's, it's not the case, that's your decision as well. We wanted to present you with the facts, give you a little bit of history, let you know what the financial model is predicting and then leave it up to you. So we're happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
I would ask, what are your plans to deal with the individual homeowners' I and I problems? A substantial amount of our parcels are older 1950s homes and older. A lot of them have basement drains going into the sanitary sewer system. Is that part of the correction process for I and I or who pays for that? If it is.
So I'll start out and then Shannon can jump in where appropriate. So you're right, Andy, I and I is one of the focused areas once we take over. So ideally, what we would do in a perfect world is we would assess all of your assets, look at the conditions, prioritize what work needs to be done and figure out how to best get it done and get it paid for. If it's on the private side of the system, that's, that will be absorbed by private constituent. That's, we just, that's the law. We have no opportunity to work on the private side. It's on the public side, which includes from the right of way into the road and beyond. Then that's our responsibility to rehabilitate that, fix it and pay for it.
I guess the one thing that I would add to that too, Andy, is you know, without knowing exactly if there's a storm sewer system immediately available, you know, we'd need to take a look at each of the individual streets, what the existing utilities. If there's a storm sewer system, how can we help facilitate getting those basement drains turned over? That's the exact kind of project that we would like to get into the village and start looking at and figuring out how we can make it better.
I certainly understand it would be their charge. At what point do we have to enforce it? You would enforce it, we would enforce it? How would that be handled?
Well, so I know we've already got local law number one of 2011, which kind of outlines some of that, but again, without really getting into each street and knowing the particulars, you know, if there's not a solution available for them to divert it, if there's not a location that it can be diverted to, that's going to be a little bit of a challenge and we want to, we want to work with you. We don't want to mandate something that can't be fixed.
Yeah, and Andy, that's, that's a challenge that is not just unique to the village of Baldwinsville, it's all the villages have the same kind of scenario. And Shannon is right in that, you know, if there's an obvious solution depending upon the street, depending upon the topography, depending upon a whole bunch of different conditions, then we'll take the charge in implementing the solution. But oftentimes there is no quick, easy or readily available solution. And so we have to find ways to deal with that in a different way. And quite honestly, we're not there yet. It's work in process because each street, each situation is different.
Question on how sewer rates are determined? Is that, is it a flat fee across the whole county where everybody pays the same amount?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's really a function of our budget where we look at revenue and expenses and correlate that back to what we call a unit charge depending upon how many gallons people use and what is assessed against those gallons. So every residential unit in Anadaga County is assessed one unit. Whether you're a smaller home or a bigger home, it's one unit. One unit is the 44881, $448.81. Commercial industrial users, it's based on water usage. 120,000 gallons is equivalent to one unit. So we look at their water bills, we do some math, we come up with the units and then we multiply the units by 44881. So that's, that's kind of a short answer to the question, but let's say the majority of your constituent base in the village may be residential, I don't know, to be honest, but let's say it's residential, that would be one unit for each constituent, each home.
Okay. Now, one, one concern that, that I had in the beginning, when I first heard about this. Was you have residents different times will say, what do we get for our tax dollars? And you say, well, you have a great police department, you know, you have beautiful trails and parks and we have a wonderful water sewer department. If you, if you wake up in the middle of the night and you hear water leaking, or if you smell sewage in your basement. You call DPW at three o'clock in the morning and by three thirty, somebody's going to be at your house. Am I going to be able to tell them the same thing with your maintenance that, hey, you're, these guys will be there. They're, they, they'll respond maybe not as quite as quickly as our guys because they're only in cases of two or three blocks away. But can we be comfortable in telling people that, that the maintenance will be something that they can count on?
Absolutely. And I would say that in most cases, our guys are there within an hour because there is somebody always available. And they're coming out of Henry Clay for the most part from our facility there. But some of them could be on call from their house and, and coming right in from there. But and I guess, you know, I would, I would say that, yeah, they, they could count on us and they could probably count on us for even more because not only will we come out and, and reestablish the flow immediately in the middle of the night, but the following day, we're going to send another crew out. And they're going to clean it, they're going to jet it, they're going to televise it, they're going to do whatever they need to do. And they're going to determine what else needs to be done. Why did this happen? Is it a structural issue? Was it something got flushed down and they're going to educate, you know, work with your residents to educate them and make sure it doesn't happen again. So I think there's a lot of value in what our, our sewer crews do.
Sounds good to me. And I know there is an issue with some concern from municipalities, wouldn't be as much for the village because we're, we're fairly built out, but with some of the towns being concerned that they lose the ability to say, we're going to, we're going to okay this development. And then to have the county say, oh, sorry. You're not hooking up to our sewer because we're at capacity and and I saw there was a ruling that came through here a week or two ago. Saying that you probably wouldn't be able to challenge that, you know, if you're a municipality. Just talk, can you talk to that just a little bit?
Yeah, so to make, to make a, a long and complicated story a bit shorter. Lease or no lease consolidation or no consolidation, the process that development has to go through in any town and any village by law. Is, is the same. And that is that if you have a new subdivision that goes in. A new housing tract as an example. The engineer is required to prepare the design, submit it to us. We have to look at it, we have to assess capacity and make a determination and most cases, we have plenty of capacity to be able to serve the subdivisions. And I know in Baldwinsville Seneca Knowles, that's, that's the same condition there as well. So i- if you sign on as a leased community, that process doesn't change. You still, if you have a subdivision that's looking to go in. Same thing, plans are prepared by an engineer. Facilities are constructed by a developer. We okay the capacity and you move on. As I said. We do not want to be, and this is not intended to be a overreaching act of government to get involved in local planning and development and economic issues. We're strictly focused on sanitary sewer, good management, good management of the sanitary sewer system. And like anything else, when you bifurcate or when you fragment a system. Then there's a lot of finger pointing when there's a problem. We're trying to get away from that by having a, a united system, again, from toilet to treatment devoid of economic development issues.
Anybody else on the board have questions?
I do.
Yes, I have a couple. Hi Frank, Mark Wilder.
Hey, Mark.
Thank you for the presentation, Shannon. Nice job.
Thanks.
What is your best case scenario on the timing of execution?
So we, we can move as quick as you can move. Ideally, you know, the leases are prepared. It's the same leases that were in the Meadowbrook Limestone Service Area. So you can have a little bit of comfort, I think, by understanding that the village of Manlius and the village of Fayetteville have fully vetted those leases with their attorneys and with their technical people and sign them. It's the same lease. Nothing has changed. So when you're ready. You would bring it up as an agenda item at your, one of your village meetings and pass a resolution. And then at that point, after we get the rest of the paperwork done. Including some exhibits that go along with the lease, which will help you complete. Then you become part of our system. So the timing is entirely up to you. It you can, you can make plans for a resolution at your next village meeting or, or whenever you decide to do it. Our hope is that as we continue to move this thing through the community. That it's, you know, as soon as you can, if that's what you desire to do.
So, so there really isn't a, a time limit or a drop dead timeframe?
No, there isn't, but you don't want to let it drag out for a year. I don't, I don't think that sends kind of the wrong message, right?
Well, that's why I'm asking if you have some perception is three months, one month, six months.
You know, I, I would say a reasonable amount of time would be, you know, a couple of months for you guys to think about it. Maybe, maybe there's questions that will come up after tonight that you can contact Shannon and I about. And we can answer them. But you know, I would say within the next month or two would be probably the proper timeframe.
Are you aware of our fiscal year?
Do you agree with that, Shannon?
Yeah, I would. And then I guess the only other thing that I would say is, so the village fiscal year ending in May, at the end of May, right? So do
End of February.
Oh, okay. You guys are end of February. So you're on a little bit of a different schedule. Most likely, so let's just say, for example, best case, you pass the resolution tonight, we begin assembling those documents, what we know from Fayetteville and Manlius and, and the two towns. It takes about three months to get all of the attachments and exhibits all put together. So fast forward that out. We would be looking at our April, May, sometime in May, end of May, fully executed, beginning of June. We would take over everything we, and that allows us some time to transfer utility accounts for those pump stations of electric, the phone. Us to do our due diligence to make sure we know where all your stuff is. We've got it fully into our GIS program. There's some other legal documents that have to be signed certifications. Pretty strict stuff, but that's, that's the timeframe of, of how long it takes us to go from resolution to fully executed. Does that help, Mark?
Yes, I mean, I think the, the main thing is we just started a fiscal year and we have a budget we approved during the last fiscal year for this year. That has sewer collection and, and revenues and expenses are already planned out. So we're trying to take that into consideration as we kind of go through this. So I, I think that helps. I did have a couple of other questions. I don't know if anybody else has a follow up on that specific issue or not.
One of our challenges is our billing process to be equitable to hall residents. As we go ahead and bill sewer. It wouldn't be fair for Mark to have to pay and Bruce not. So somehow we have to coordinate it so that our timing.
Oh, you guys bill quarterly.
Yes.
On a rotating, so it's like a couple of books every month. And but over the three months, okay. We would work with you on that. I, you know, I think what we would want to do, so our sewer bill in terms of our fee, you won't get billed for twenty twenty-one until twenty twenty-two for us, but we would certainly work with you to make sure we could hit the time of yours, your sewer bills, when you guys stop operations. You know, we could line that up for you folks, if that makes sense. We, we, we'll work with you and come up with a date that works for you from an administrative perspective.
Okay. And that is a concern because
Yeah.
I, I
It's a valid concern.
We, we're all quarterly and I might pay in January and Mark might be in February and Bruce be in March, and then it starts over. And so we'd want to make sure that everybody paid equal segments of bills before we cut it. So that's, that's helpful information that you provided. Thank you.
I got you. None of the other villages mentioned that. So that's a really good question. So I mean, if we shop for the beginning of June. That's the first six months and that gets everybody paying two quarters. Roughly, right? I mean, if we assume.
If we start in January, I'm not a hundred percent sure how our quarters start, but we would, we can figure that out pretty quick here and make sure. Okay, good. It's nice to know that we can work on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So a couple of other questions, if you don't mind. Town of Ambur, I know you made your presentation to them in the middle of December. Where do they stand? You mentioned that Town of Lysander, you just did that recently then, like tonight or something? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's right, Mark. So actually, the Town of Lysander, tonight, we started at six, we were done by seven. There was one question, one or two questions, and they're very pleased. My sense is that they're going to move forward in some, in some way with it. Town of Van Buren, we did, as you said, in December. We had the same kind of presentation, identical presentation. A host of questions. We're working through those questions with them. Most of which are related to development concerns, much of which I've already covered and said that, you know, lease or no lease. The development protocol and practices that anyone has to provide to WEP. Which is governed by law is the same. So once they started to understand that, most of the other questions died away. So that we're still working with them and I'm sure we'll be working a little bit more with Lysander as well. To, to move everything forward.
I've got a question about the green infrastructure projects that are the alternative relative to the, the financing. Do you have any comments on what those might be or any of your just decisions about what sort of projects you'd be interested in or approving?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a great question. That's a lease condition under the debt relief portion of the, the lease. What, what we're doing is we're providing up to two hundred thousand dollars of debt relief for towns that have deficits in their districts. Up to two hundred thousand or the opportunity, as you speak to Bob, of a green infrastructure project on, I believe it's the Village Main Street platform. So it could be something as simple as porous pavement facade improvements to a village corridor, which would lessen the amount of stormwater runoff that it may impact the sanitary system. That's just one of many examples of what a green infrastructure project could be. For, for you as part of the lease arrangement.
And you'd work with the village relative to making suggestions or going along with that?
Yeah, it's, it's our project in our direction because we're paying for it, but by all means, we would work with the village. Look at the project. Maybe you have, you know, two or three areas to look at. So we'd assess, you know, what, what's the best use of the money? What's the biggest bang for the dollar in terms of eliminating runoff and making it a true green infrastructure project? And what is it that the village wants to do? So we're pretty open to that, pretty flexible with that to the extent that we can be. We do have to follow the lease. And the, and the, the conditions there within that two hundred thousand dollar green infrastructure project, but we're fairly flexible in what the project could be. I believe the way it reads now is that it's, it's, it would be a WEP prepared project, but in consult with you.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
I can see Mark's all set to ask. You used the expression combined assets. Could you expand on what those, what assets we're talking about?
So I think when I said that. I, I've spoken so much today, I'll have to remember, but I think when I said combined assets, what I truly meant was taking your local assets. Your sewer laterals, your sewer mains, your sewer manholes and pump stations, combining them with WEP's assets. Our big pump stations, our big mains, our manholes.
Okay, the physical system.
The physical system, yes. That's what I meant, I think.
We won't hold you to that.
Okay, since no one has mentioned it, and I know Hannah's here. We don't have debt, we have fund balance. Is that an asset that you're looking at also?
No.
Nope.
Okay, well, that's my question.
You get to, you get to keep your sewer fund balance.
The last question I had. Andy, I don't know if you wanted to talk.
Go ahead.
You mentioned that you would want to work with the village personnel to develop the GIS system and get a better handle on where the sewers are. Would the timing of that be after we sign then, if we sign the lease, you would want to get in and work with our people? We're, we're doing a lot of snow removal. I mean, our, our personnel are kind of they're, they're assigned to different tasks that are seasonally dependent, as you can imagine. We wouldn't want to interrupt too much of that. So how would we coordinate the, the, the resources and what you would need from us?
Well, the first thing, so we've actually gone out and, and our crews have actually, I believe they've located ninety-five percent, there's one subdivision, there's one small area that they haven't done. So we've located it probably. The next bigger thing that we would want is to get with them, to get maps. House call records, you know, DPW is great. They keep a lot of books on the history and drawings of, of all of that infrastructure. We'd want to just work with them. We'd want to sit down and, and see what they've got for record plans, find out if there's any particular areas that are known issues for them. And we could certainly do that at a time that, that works with them. We can wait till the snow is done and, you know, April. Or maybe May sometimes. But we can certainly work with them. And I think we, we've, we've gotten ourselves a good way there. We just want their institutional knowledge. We want a chance to pick their brains.
Could I expand farther on what Andy had asked about the I and I from older homes? Obviously, that wouldn't be the first target you would have. But how aggressive will you be at doing house inspections and stuff to identify these floor drains, the gutters that are going to the wrong place? Stuff like that.
That's it. I, I'll be, I'll be forthright. That, it's, it, that's a concern, but we it's a concern that we haven't got our arms fully around yet because it's very complicated and it's very situational, right? So i- it's a concern because all I and I is a concern. We have public I and I, which we can control and which we can attack. The private I and I is something that we're going to have to find a way to deal with that's fair, that's equitable. And because the situations vary across the board and across municipalities. It's a very difficult question to answer succinctly right now. I can tell you that it's on the radar, that it's something that we're looking at. There's many opportunities to approach it. There's and this is just an idea. Doesn't mean it's going to come to fruition. There's an incentive opportunity to say, you know, if you know that your system is hooked up. If you're, if your floor drains or your stormwater systems are hooked up, hooked up to our sanitary sewer and you disconnect them. Maybe there's an opportunity for an incentive and a tax credit applied to your house because of that. Now, don't hold me to that. That's just one example of something that we're bantering around. Private I and I is difficult for us to get our arms around. Not only in, in what the needs are, but what the policy would be in the future. But I can tell you, it's on the radar.
I guess the one thing I would add to that is let me expand on what we're doing in Fayetteville and Manlius, those two villages, very similar in age and issues. We are starting first in renewing the local ass. We are starting first in renewing the local assets. We're going to line the pipes, we're going to work on the manholes, and we're going to fix the public portion of the lateral. And then we're going to gauge how well did it work? And then from there, we're going to decide how much further up the pipe onto the private side we might need to go. But that's the approach we want to take. We want to invest on the public side first. We're never going to get rid of all of the INI, but we want to work on the low lying fruit. We want to fix the main pipes out in the roads first and foremost. And, and that's the approach we're taking in Meadowbrook Limestone, and that's the approach that we'll take in the Village of Baldwinsville.
I had a list of 20 questions, your presentation answered 19 of them, so thank you.
That's a pretty good presentation.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We've had a chance to write it and rewrite it and rewrite it.
Anybody else got any other questions?
Well, we appreciate your time.
Yes, we sure do.
Yeah, let me, um, let me just close with this for everybody. If a question comes up after tonight, Shannon and I are always available to, to answer it. So please don't hesitate and Bob Baldwin, I, I think you have a copy of the lease, correct?
Yes, actually, I'm looking at it.
Okay, good. So if you want, we can send you a copy of this PowerPoint presentation as well. And then we'll go from there. We'll, we'll wait to hear back from you and, and look forward to you joining the effort.
Thank you. Thanks for coming on, and I hope that, that some people in the public will get a chance to watch this presentation and have some of their questions answered before they even have to come to us. So it was, it was very thorough, and we certainly appreciate your patience and, and finally getting to us and looking forward to working with you guys down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Have a good one.
Have a good night.
Okay. And we'll move on now. We had, that was a pretty good presentation. Nice that they could answer all those questions. Andy, Andy had sent me a list. I know he had like 20 questions, so he's not making that up. We don't have any citizens on to comment. I don't know if anybody is watching. If they have a question, feel free to put it on the Facebook comment area, and hopefully Meg or somebody will catch it and we can answer it if we can tonight. If not, we'll get back to you. We'll go to trustees comments. We'll start with Megan.
Nothing, just the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, Andy?
All set, just the agenda, thanks.
Alrighty, Ruth Seko.
Just the agenda, thank you.
Okay, Mark Wilder.
I have to request my never-ending executive session to update the board on the status of a contract issue negotiation.
Okay.
We can pretty much guess which one that is because there's only one in play now, so.
All right, we'll add that item C under new business. Anything else, Mark?
No, thank you.
And, and thanks for getting involved because I know this is somewhat in your, your bailiwick a little bit, and it's nice to have you around to, to ask questions and, and stuff that other people might not think of, so.
Everybody had good questions, so people have been thinking about it. I think that's important.
Yep. Thanks, Mark. Bruce, anything?
I'll stick to the agenda.
And Mike Shepard.
The agenda's fine, thanks.
Okay, I do have a few things. Did get an email from a fellow who is a boater, and he pays a lot of attention to the people who run the canal. And he is very concerned that it appears that they are shortening the canal season, which is not to his liking. He pointed out that when the current folks took over, the average time that the canal was open was 199 days, and that got shortened to 152 after the new group took over. This year, they're proposing Memorial Day to September 22nd, which would be 114 days, which is a 42% reduction. And he's concerned, and, and he makes a good point. We have advanced our business district quite a bit based on our waterfront, and the fact that boaters can come and use our docks and go to local businesses and so on. So I will be contacting the canal people and ask them if this is true and, and ask them if there's any way we can push to not have it shortened. Obviously, the COVID plays into it. I'd be interested if they would tell me that this was a one-time thing. Because of COVID, they don't want to open early. Also, some maintenance issues apparently have cropped up, and I don't know if that's true. So I'm going to make some contact and see if I can find out more information. There was a concern that New York State was going to be in huge debt. They did catch one break because the COVID emergency is extending into 2021. The Biden administration has, is sharing more money for Medicaid. So it's a billion dollars per quarter. It's anticipated that this will at least last two quarters of this year, and at least maybe three, which would mean two to three billion dollars that New York State will get for Medicaid, which will certainly help some of the budget issues with the state. I saw that Anheuser-Busch, which is not going to advertise in the Super Bowl this year, but spend their money on COVID causes, is going to spend a billion dollars on their facilities across the country, including the one here in Baldwinsville. So that's always good news to know that, that one of our real big companies for hiring people and employers and so on is, is going to strengthen their facility. And very happy to hear that. I did get an email from Claude the other day of several things, and he brought up the condition of Syracuse Street from McGuire Chevrolet to the Four Corners, and it's getting worse and worse. I had made contact with the state DOT back in the fall when Chuck had some concern about some of the new signs they put in, were making it, would make it impossible for our vehicle that does the, the business sidewalks would not be able to get in between the sign and the businesses. And the state responded immediately. I also included Syracuse Street, and I got no response. So I'm going to continue to push them. Claude has offered to sign on if, if I do a letter. I will talk to Bob Wicks and make a joint letter from the three elected officials. We can appeal to get some work done. I don't know how much some of you noticed, but Syracuse Street, particularly in the area of the bridges over by Downer Street, there's some, some real bad situations. If it gets much worse, they'll really have to reconstruct some of that street probably. So I will be pushing that, and hopefully we'll see some, some effort to fix it. I, I was hoping when they were paving all that area on 48 out into Amburin, you know, all the way from the thruway to the village line, I said, how much more would it be to run the rest of the way to the Four Corners? But, you know, they, they had already set their budget and, and their work time and so on, and so that, that was a no-go. On the 16th of February, I'd be meeting with other mayors with NICOM, and we'll be able to talk to our state legislators on issues that we would like them to support. If any of you have any issues of a statewide nature that concern you, send me an email, and I'll include that because we're all going to get a chance to pitch our things, you know, whether it is to do with the budget, whether it has to do with police reform, whether it has to do with legalizing marijuana, wherever you feel like you would like to see legislators support. I can, I'll have access to all of our legislators. So and I think that's about all I have. We will move on to the rest of the agenda. We'll move on to department heads. We'll start with our attorney, Bob.
I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay, codes officer Greg. You're muted.
Always muted. Just want to make sure that residents realize that they are responsible for shoveling, clearing the sidewalks in front of their homes throughout the village. Just want to make sure that they're clearing those. We did have quite a bit of snow this past week, so I'll be going out to see, make sure that those are cleared. Other than, I'll stick with agenda.
Be nice if, if people would help out older people, and you know, if you're doing your sidewalk with a snow blower, just go and crush your neighbor's property and run it once over and back and save it.
If you do know someone that, that's unable to do that, it would be nice to, yeah, give them a hand.
Yep. Okay, very good, Greg. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Village clerk, we have the deputy clerk with us tonight, Jody, anything?
No, we'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, nice to see you. Next up, our treasurer, Anna.
Um, I would just like to first of all, thank everyone that has been looking over the budget financials and asking questions. One person has been asking more than, than some of the rest, and I appreciate that. And if there's issues, a couple of issues have been brought to my attention. I mean, I look at these figures, so many figures I've got. I'm still working on the AUD from a year ago, and we're coming up with new figures and new budgets. So just please look over your departmental things, and if you see anything, you have a question on why is that figure look like that? It's so much easier for me if you tell me now than whether when I get ready to close out the budget, and then we find out we have all these issues. So I, I really do appreciate more and more of you are looking at it, and I really appreciate that a lot. And I hope to have January's financials emailed to everyone this coming week. So please look at those because it's the last one that you're going to see until I get ready to start closing out the year. Okay, all I have.
Okay, thanks, Anna.
Yep.
Next up, senior center, Ruth.
Hi, just as you probably can figure out, the seniors are very concerned and focused on how to get the vaccine. So there's a couple of different numbers that are available, but the easiest thing is just give us a call if you're struggling with that, and we will help you try to negotiate that system. Other than that, as you mentioned, we're doing some things on Zoom, and we will be adding a Zoom bingo on the ninth. So if you want to join us for that, please also call the senior center and we'll get you that information. This month's drive-up event is Valentine's Day Focus, and that will happen on February 12th at 2:00. So drive on up, and we'll have some goodies for you in a, a few minutes to say hello and greet friends there by the front porch. And looking forward to March, there's a senior fair and a bag event that we're going to be doing in conjunction with another agency. If there's a local merchant or service provider that wants to be a part of that, wants to bring either their literature or some kind of a little giveaway for our folks, just give me a call and we'll make sure that you get a chance to be a part of that, and that's happening on March 4th. And other than that, unless anybody has any questions, that's it.
I would, I would point out to everybody that that it's been a tough time, but there's been people that answered the call, that in our village, it's been terrific. And I would just point out, somebody that we knew had an appointment for a shot on a weekend, and all the normal countywide services don't work on the weekends. So this person was now distressed at having an appointment, can't drive herself. So my wife put out an appeal on Baldwinsville, helping Baldwinsville, and three or four people right away said, we'll take her, we'll take her. So the first one that had called or checked in, Linda made arrangements, hooked the two of them up. She took her for a shot, went in with her and helped her fill out the paperwork because this woman has vision problems. She said, I didn't expect her to go in with me. It was really nice that she did. And then on the way home, said, I gotta stop at Aldi's. Do you got it? You need anything at Aldi's? And she said, well, you don't have to stop for me. She said, no, no, I'm going anyways with or without you. And she said, well, yeah, I'll go. I can pick up a few things. And she called up my wife the next day and just said, what a wonderful experience. It was so nice that this person did that. And it, it happens all the time around the village. People are constantly helping other people out. So I, I'm very proud of our village, the way we've responded to people who, who need something. And I just had to take a moment to, to make note of the fact that we do help each other, and we're very good. And again, we're talking about sidewalks and shoveling and the snow, the beginning, the snow was very light. The snow the last day or two was pretty heavy snow. Go out and clean somebody's car off for them. You may be amazed at how much you'd brighten their day. All right, enough of that. Public Works, Chuck.
First of all, I do want to thank Anna for all her help and guiding me through this budget. And she's been very good about telling me what I can't have. But actually, it's been fun. DBW, pretty much now, everything's a snow. We had a couple of really decent snowfalls, but a lot of them were little. And the problem with a little bit of snow is it takes just as much time and, and money to go out with a truck as it does a lot of snow because we still got to get through it. We had a water break yesterday on, on Tappan Street, and we had Tappan Street closed for a while. It was a little longer than normal because we had trouble finding, the gas company had trouble finding the gas lines, but we worked, worked with them. Got that taken care of. Senior Center, we're almost done with the projects over there. The, we got majority of the painting done. We got the new wall constructed, doors put on, and also want to thank Ruth for, we were having trouble with space for the sexual harassment training that we had to take. There was enough room in the village hall for, for everybody, and, and the DBW took ours over at the seniors there. There's lots of room over there, and now we use it over there. Our young, younger generation in the water department are better with the computers, and they got that up and running for us, and it worked out well. Other than that, nothing else. Just questions.
Good job. And again, we, we hear constantly, people complain that their street didn't get plowed, and when we check it out, it's not in the village because our village streets get taken care of, and
And we, and we do, and we do have, we have GPS in the truck now, and, and on occasion, people will call and, and say, you know, you didn't go by my house. You know, haven't been by in a few hours, and we can bring it right up and say, it was there a half an hour ago. We can tell exactly where the trucks are, how fast everyone, and how, how often they've gone up and down the streets.
I, I notice our streets are pretty darn clean, so hats off to your guys. All right, we'll move on to the police department. Michael.
Mayor, nothing unless there's questions, just the agenda.
Very good. Okay, we'll move on to new business. I, can I get a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the 2021 operational agreement for the concert and event promotion and production on Paper Mountain Island between the Village of Baldwinsville and Chuck Chiao at Creative Concerts, Inc.? Second remark. Any discussion? It's basically the same contract we've had with just a couple minor additions that Bob has added, particularly COVID-related, you know, the promotions people will honor the COVID regulations that are in effect. And if it says you can have 50 people at a concert, you can, that's all they can have, and they'll be expected to honor that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item B, can I get a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum stating amendments to the agreement between the Village of Baldwinsville and AFSCME Local 2970 and New York Council 66 for the period of March 1st, 2020 through February 29th, 2025? Mark and Andy, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Anything else anybody feels the need to discuss before we go to executive session? Seeing none, can I get a motion to move into executive session for update on contract negotiations?
Moved.
Second.
Moving a second. Did you get them, Jody?
Who was the second?
Mark.
Got it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second to adjourn to executive session. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. So just hang on, and I'll just shut off the live and I'll shut off the recording. And everybody who doesn't need to be here can check out, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.